Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022. Council members are encouraging virtual public participation as there is limited seating in council chamber due to the number of COVID-19 infections in our area. All meetings will be live streamed on the city website and on the city channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Our first order of business is roll call. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
The crowds.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
This is Cal Smith. Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern. Official action or deliberation which are or may be before city council perfunny will not be permitted. After being called, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Beltsuver. And Helena Montana, Akra, Ghana. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. What follows is a tale of three dangers, weaknesses in Pittsburgh public safety. Danger one, District Nine, Councilor Burgess. Public safety weakness. Blacks kill blacks. USA nationwide and Pittsburgh citywide, greater than 70% according to the FBI 2015 to 2020. It means that a whole lot of black lives that do not matter to black Pittsburghers. It means that black lives matter more based on empirical evidence to whites. Blacks unarmed. USA nationwide. 2020 killed by police is not greater than 30 out of 40 million people who are identified as black by the FBI and by the Washington Post. Danger two, by far greater than danger one, District Eight, Councilor Strasburger. Public safety weakness, biochemical, physical. Council undersight, obscurantist info intel to citizens regarding whether mobile drone and static camera surveillance of the University of Pittsburgh and CMU complexes is up. What upgrades are in place to suppress release of virological, bacterial, and fungal research organisms? I and the Global Intelligence Society recommend the provision to all Pittsburghers with a biochemical and radiation hazard suit. And number two, anti-drone, anti-camera shields and stocks of antimicrobials, anti-nano-infectives, and anti-robotics. An oversight upgrade can take place in relationship to Akra Ghana's focus on thorium over uranium for its nuclear reactor. I think the Council of Strasburger on this should resign. Danger three, Mr. Ganey and the council love of religion and Pittsburgh children. You welcomed all, you welcome all religions, but yet you welcome the Roman Catholic version of the Christian religion, Three January, over other religions. You welcomed representatives of the Pittsburgh Roman Catholic pre-university education system in a proclamation eight February 2022, assuring us the kids linked like school because they learned about God. Now, this is a God who did not intervene while Roman Catholic priests raped other kids in school and whom this council does not condemn with the millstone that Jesus would assign to them.
Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. We, the people of Bon Air, have significant investment into our properties. We stand to lose significant value financially of and quality of life reduction. The largest investment that the average American will make is their home. Our biggest assets are being threatened. This is why we, as a community, have expressed significant concern about the potential development of Bon Air School into anything other than a green space. We already had a valuable school stolen from our community. We deserve a valuable green space to replace it. The Pennsylvania Constitution states under political powers that all power is inherent in the people and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Negligent infliction of emotional distress and blockbusting are being perpetrated by those who oppose our community. Real damages are occurring to the Bon Air community. I have no doubt that this controversy was a contributing factor to the demise of my husband. The PPS created this controversy against we, the property owners of Bon Air. My husband did his duty to promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the people he served. Will you, as elected public servants, do your duty to help the people of Bon Air? My husband, Michael, was duty-bound his entire adult life. He completed his mission on earth well. He is now one of the watchers and helping in the spiritual realm. He is still a force with us. A neighbor wrote, "I think one of the best ways we will honor him is to keep fighting for Bon Air and be kind to our neighbors. We will commit to that, I promise." End of quote. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Michael Mullen, Memorial Green Space.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us in chambers today? Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Les Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. We're not strangers to each other. Although I don't, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting all of you personally. You'll say, what are you here for? I'm here because if we go back through the minutes of 2003 of this council, you will find that what was approved was Management Budget Revenue Opportunities Act, including a budget of $75,000. What happened after that has never been revealed to me. And I'm the father of the thinking, the concept thinking. Now, right now, there is a list being prepared, and I don't know, I'm not sure where, where to take it to, but there is a thing called equity law. And I don't know that I want to do to enter into that arena. So I'm here to demand, not to ask, but to demand that the 12 things that you will receive a list of, plus two, that you do not even begin to understand what I'm bringing to you. I'm bringing to you the money that's needed for these serious issues that you're faced with. The bridges. The ghettos. That Ed Ganey has to have freedom of some cash in hand in order to go into areas where the budget isn't going to be enough. So let's work together. I want to see an interim agreement that will make it possible for me to reveal the two additional major items on my agenda. And there's more of them always coming. It happens to be that it's a thinking machine. And I will bring you more money than you've ever realized was present. When you look down, you see the floor. I don't see the floor. I see money and a way to get to it. Let's work together so that Pittsburgh is the most outstanding city in the entire country, if not the world. We can do it. We have the potential. The money is actually here, but you don't know where to get it. I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are any other speakers with us today?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I was going over some of my papers, trying to find out different things I have said here. And I see on, it was January of 2004, that we were fighting for Bon Air. This lady's calling on the phone. Bon Air and Miller. This is 2004. I would like for you citizens to get a pencil and paper because I'm going to give you a phone number later to call WESA FM 90.5. They have a thousand, $10,000 challenge for funding. So if you can, because they really do serve us. They tell us some things that I haven't heard on other stations or even on the radio. Now, I have, I spoke yesterday about Kimberly Clark. And this is, I'm going through my papers. And this paper I found, I came down years ago when you hired the new clerk. I said, because what it was is that I'm listening on the radio. They're on vacation. They were on vacation. Yes, we're on vacation. And I heard on the radio Mary Beth speaking about the new clerk. Oh, she's learning so fast. So they said she sat with her a week and they were saying how fast she had learned. And then I couldn't believe it, that Kim has been all these years down here, years working here, went and got a bachelor's degree. You understand what a bachelor's degree is from Carlo College, four years, and I think it was a business administration. Now, I have just let her, this, what I wrote, "Kim carried counsel in a professional and dignified way." Yes, counsel, Kim had a lot of respect for all citizens, even me, while making improvements. Kim's, let's check Kim's biography, years of experience, and she completed college. You don't understand. I was in college, I went to college too, for like 20 years, two classes here, two classes. I was a senior in college when my son died. I only needed 20 more credits and I just couldn't go back. Okay. And I heard that they interviewed someone. What I'm speaking about, and I want you to talk, listen to me, when you talk about the money, when you wasteful, because I felt like if, if you were going to get someone, get them from out inside Pennsylvania. Don't go down to Georgia, because my daughter lived down there. And I went down there and I was going to go to the meeting, but I wasn't able to. Georgia, that was, they got backward laws. And I mean, they're very backward. You're also, I want you to understand why I be saying that. This is messy. I got a copy. I wanted the copy of the, the schedule. And I got the copy and there's no date of what date this was made. That's sloppy stuff. Detail. We need details.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers with us today in chambers and/or online? Seeing none, that moves us to our standing committee agenda, the first of which is the Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself. Our first deferred paper is Bill 60.
Bill 60, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Judith Fearson Nolan, Stephen Nolan, and Their Attorneys in the Amount of $150,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed at the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County.
61 as well.
Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant payable to Pedro Gallo, Gordon, Alfano, Basik, and Rasbanti for professional legal services in connection with civil rights litigation for an amount not to exceed $9,225.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both bills are recommended. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 109.
Bill 109, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Ronald James Madero in, in Care of Jeremy Mercer in the Amount for Full and Final Settlement of $125,000 for a case filed in the United States District Court, Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion. Motion for executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we hold for executive session. Bill 110.
Bill 110, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capitol Budget, the 2021 CDBG Program, the 2021 Through 2026 Capitol Improvement Program by Increasing Park Reconstruction, Regional Asset District Parks by $136,996.
Motion. Motion to approve discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to ask the, if there's someone from Domi. Director. Can you answer the question about, so I realize that the landslide remediation started happening with the chapel shelter in, near the chapel shelter in, in Riverview Park, which is phenomenal because, you know, there's been several redesigns and and whatnot. I just want to understand, is this an increase because costs went up?
The, the increase here is actually related to just an additional allocation of funds from RAD as part of their annual true-up. So at the end of the year, additional revenue that was collected by the Regional Asset District, the city usually, the city typically receives a final increased payment based on late sales tax collections based on the formula. So I, I think I see there are Domi representatives on the line who might be able to speak to the particular project. I just wanted to note that the additional allocation here is coming from new RAD funds that we were not aware of the exact amount that will be coming in at the end of last fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Yeah, it'd be good to know if it's related, just this is going, just to, you know, a bucket for all the different landsides that are happening in Riverview Parks. Since there's unfortunately probably 10, there were, there were nine, there might be 10. And so I'll just didn't know if this was specific to the one reconstruction right now, or if it's just going into the general bucket that we're going to draw down from for all of them.
Yeah, this, this is Eric Setzler from Domi. I can confirm that this money is not going into the project by Chapel Shelter, which has started already, you know, it's just started recently. That's pulling from existing funds. But certainly, as you say, there are at least 10 slides in Riverview Park. And, you know, we're continuing to address more as additional funding becomes available. So this amount will allow us to, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure what the exact amount is, but would allow us to continue to do additional projects.
Well, that's phenomenal. I'll, I'll take any more money for, you know, landsides in Riverview Park, because we know there's no shortage of that happening there. And since I have you on the line, can you, can you tell me, since it just started, so I know that, and you ask constituents to reach out, how long the, the construction will take place? Because I know the roads close down right now.
Road is closed. So our project does include maintaining a narrow lane for traffic to get through. However, just as we were getting started, there was a water line break that was discovered there. So PWSA is on site to address the water leak. And I believe they have the road closed right now to facilitate their work. So once they get, we're waiting for them. And once they're done, which I, I shouldn't imagine should take very long, a couple of days perhaps. But once they're done, we'll get back on our project. I'm anticipating about four months to finish it, especially in the springtime. It's, you know, it can be a little weather dependent. If we get a very wet spring, it could delay things, but about four months.
Well, thank you. That is one big step forward. Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended. Bill 111.
Bill 111, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 713, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter on behalf of the city into an amended agreement of sale with Smith and Bowen and all documents necessary to purchase 80 Wabash Street along with two vacant parcels adjacent thereto for a total amount not to exceed $374,000, which includes the purchase price of $344,000 plus up to $30,000 in acquisition costs for the purpose of continued operation of the city's West End Healthy Active Living Center.
Second.
Yeah, I just want to thank the previous administration and the current administration for realizing that this is such an important building in our district. It's the senior center in the West End. So we're happy to see it continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to congratulate Madam President, you know, that we, we held a hearing at that building, I believe. Yeah, it's kind of ratty, needs, needs some work. But yeah, I'm really glad because that's right there on the main street, so visible, and it's a reflection of the city.
I say that one of the reasons why it looks so bad is because we didn't own it. And so we didn't want to put the money. Now we own it, we can private, so thank you.
Beautiful, no, right?
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill sees affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices. Second. Session, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards. Second. Session, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. First new papers, Bill 112.
Bill 112, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety and the Chief of Police on behalf of the city to enter into a strategic relationship agreement and amendments thereto with Policing Equity, Inc., to allow for the sharing of data, which shall be at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion. If none, I do have a question. I'm just curious about what data we're actually sharing.
Hi, it's, it's, it's Chief Schubert. I apologize. I'm coming from one meeting to the next. So I just pulled over in my car. We've already had an existing relationship with Center for Policing Equity, and they did a study for us that would have come out on, in the fall of 2020. There is additional things that they can do that will help us to make the data more current, because the data that they used before would have gone up to like 2016. So it's easier to, to extract the, the, the data. It's not names or anything. It's just all on to identify disparity in other traffic stops, field contact search and seizures, things of that nature. So it's no, no names, no, no information on, on the people. It's strictly data from the, the information we collect, race, gender, things of that nature.
And where can we get a copy of the report?
So there, there, that's what they wanted to do. They wanted to redo the report to have more updated information. Once they do that, then it will be released to the, to us in the general public.
Thank you. Any further?
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Council President?
I just briefly, I want to know if this is, if anybody saw this, if it's similar to what the activists came to the table discussing that they wanted to do.
I was curious about that myself, but.
I'm wondering if it's the same kind, if you're already going to collect what they want to.
I believe Councilman O'Connor and Strasburger sponsored a bill very similar as well some time ago.
I'm just curious if we're already ahead of the game. That'd be great. So thank you.
Yeah, this, this part, I mean, we've, we've been involved with CPE for a while. This goes back probably, I think, our partnership probably 2016, well, probably, actually probably 2017. And they went through it. They worked with us to get all the data. And, you know, the, based on what we received from them at the end of 2020, you know, obviously, we were able to see the disparity that occurred in traffic stops and use of forces and things like that. And they were able to come back to us and say, hey, look, in a quicker turnaround, we can provide additional dates or years to make it more current. And that's the direction we wanted to go with that. And like I said, when it's, when it's completed, it'll be more current and shareable to the general public. The other thing that we are trying to, to, to work with is the Institute of Politics at Pitt. They're doing a, a study for the criminal justice system on disparity that exists in the, in the criminal justice system. And we're looking like we're going to be able to move forward with that. And that's providing not just qualitative, but quantitative information that can help us understand why disparity is occurring.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
No, I just, really, Chief Schubert, I wanted to commend you. You know, I've pulled lots of stats from the Pittsburgh Police Department in the last six months or so. And I'm really surprised and pleasantly surprised, you know, of their stat keeping. And as you said, Madam President, you know, this kind of reflects what some of the activist, activist groups were talking about. So it sounds like we're off to a really good head start on it, at the very least. I think we're, you know, already collecting some of that data that they're asking us to collect. So, so it should be easy to build on. And I just really wanted to compliment the Pittsburgh Police Department. They, they really keep great stats and anything you need to know. Like, so far, I've not been let down. Thank you.
No, thank you. And just for a little information, once we switch to the, the new record management system, which is hopefully going to be in June, if everything works out, well, we'll be able to extract a lot more data because redesigning the forms and being able to collect anything, anything that we need to have, we'll have. So that, that'll be a good thing for the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. Our first deferred paper is Bill 77.
Bill 77, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article III Organization, Chapter 118, Department of Mobility and Infrastructure by Adding 11803 Infrastructure Asset Reporting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Briefly.
Councilman?
Yeah. So we got our opinion from the Law Department. I just want to thank all members, Law Department for getting back to us. And obviously, this, this is a transparency bill, giving information out to the public. Glad that law has given their report and ready to move forward with the bill. And thank Domi and the administration for their help as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to thank council members for working with Councilman O'Connor and the Law Department and everyone pitching in and trying to make sure we have the best bills possible. So thank you. Thank you, Councilman O'Connor, for your willingness to work with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, or members? Councilman Burgess? Um, I won't really talk much about this. I will abstain at the moment. I'll consider about the bill that I sponsored. I'll talk about the process, I think is more important. I think that, only thing I do believe is this, and I think I want to be very clear. We have decided, we speak as one, council speaks as one. We have decided to introduce this frame. This information was already publicly developed, available, but we've decided to now compile it and put it in one form. That means we are also now responsible for fixing. I drove over the bridge that's in Erica's district on my way here. I go over it every day. There is this Swindell Bridge in Bobby's district. There's the Llama Bridge. What's, what's the one in Erica's Bridges District? I don't know the name of the bridge. It goes. Goes over Highland? It goes over the. Egley.
South Egley.
South Egley. When it goes to the park. Well, that one that they says is the, in the worst condition. It doesn't. But I, I think it's that.
Wasn't either.
I don't know the bridge.
If you said it, I'd know it.
Certainly in my district, there's the Llama Bridge. And in Bobby's district, this Windell Bridge that we know we have to replace. So where do we go from here? Where's the real, where's the real work? The real work is getting the money. So I'm, I'm going to suggest, and I am only one councilperson, but I will do my best interest, my best effort of raising the money in the next little while. That, that money will come from federal and state resources, but we need local money to get the projects shovel-ready to make them competitive. Because the reason that we don't get more infrastructure money. Because the reason that we don't get more infrastructure money is that often, those projects must be shovel-ready. That means the city must put in money, the municipality must, has put in the front money. And if you've read, you know, Post Gazette and all the reports, they've said that too. So I think we're going to, and I will, I will be suggesting ways. But if we're going to go down this road, simply to go down this road for a photo op or for a momentary celebration is not enough. Now, we have to raise the money and make it the focus of our task, to raise the money to fix this infrastructure. And I hope that we put as much energy into doing that, which is what I intend to do, is to put the money on find, with my energy and interest in finding the money. And let me also, I'm here, I might as well say the rest, I was going to say it later. So let me tell you where we're not taking the money from, at least, well, which I will argue, I've seen this movie before. Went to Act 47, I saw this movie before. When we acted 47, guess where we took the money from, to balance the budget? We took it from the city, and we took it from low and moderate income communities, they got less resources. So we've already made a commitment to insta- to saying that we're going to combat institutional racism. We've made a commitment saying that housing is human rights, and we put money in a affordable housing trust fund. We've said that we need to reimagine the police, and we put money into investing in community-based organizations. That money is not going to be touched to put in infrastructure. Yeah, and lastly, we must also make, since this is going to be one of the largest investments in our country, in our city, really, cities' history. We have to make sure that the money is spent equitably. So that's kind of my thinking.
Let me be clear, are you threatening to get money to fix infrastructure? Okay, good.
I am, I'm saying that if we're now going to do this, if we're going to enter this fray, I did not, I did not start this, but, you know, I, I believe, well, here's kind of what I think. If we're going to put on a T, TV screen that the Larmor Bridge is bad, and my residents see that Larmor, we were voting today to say, to put on a screen, right now it's already available, so nothing, I, I, I listen, there's no new information, but we're going to compile it and put it in a single place, I think that's what this bill does, right? So if we're going to put in a single place and say the Larmor Bridge is bad, which it is, chunks of it is falling down off over Washington Boulevard, and, and, okay, and needs to be replaced, okay, I agree with you. The day you do that, which is the day, is the day I'm going to say, okay, let's fix it. You're right, it's bad, so let's go fix it. Since we're, if, if it's bad, you know, it's like when I, same thing with my kids, when I go to school, go to school with my kids, and they tell me that my kids can't read, I'm like, okay, my kids can't read, how we going to, how we going to fix that problem? And so, you know, what's the after-school program, what's the, what's the program? So if we're going to now make this statement that this infrastructure, particularly these bridges are bad, let's now focus, not next week, not next year, not after a study, not after a plan, today. Let's now put our energy and focus on how we're going to get the money, new funding, to fix this infrastructure. That's what I think.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. First of all, you know, I want to say I thought Councilman O'Connor's commission is really going to be useful. It's going to make me feel better, I could tell you, you know, I, I second guess bridges I go across now. I think the objective is to inform the public which bridges are in the worst shape. But that's just a side effect, you know, the real purpose for me wanting, asking you, Madam President, to be on this commission is I envision being under bridges with engineers who know what they're doing, and me just as a communicator back to my community to say, these, this is what our engineers say, stated, and this is what they say about, we'll start with our 22 bridges, the ones that are listed in poor condition. So, so I, I love the idea, the most important people on this list are by far, in a way, the engineers, to give us the information. And if we can get them to do it voluntarily, and if we can get them to do it at our discretion, starting with, I would say that if we ever figure out the name of the bridge in Erika's district that's in some, some district repair, I mean, I feel like I can't wait to get to that bridge, I want to see why that post was put there. Maybe it wasn't put there to support the bridge, I'd like to know who put that post there, and what was the thought process behind it? Did Pendup put it there, did somebody we hire put it there? So those are the types of things I think are very important to the public right now. I think the public is questioning the safety of, our neglect of our bridges over the past decades, I would say. So nothing's more important to me than the commission that Councilman O'Connor has put together. Regarding the task force, Rev, you know what, if you think you can shake some money trees, we're going to need it, I agree with a hundred percent. You know, I will be in supportive of that.
Seen him shake trees, he can do it.
I know, right, right, yeah, no better, no better person to send on that mission. I do believe we have DOMI representatives who regularly, you know, solicit funds for such things from the state, from the federal government. I'm not sure how the task force is going to take a different approach or, or go after different pots of money. Can anybody elaborate on that for me?
As to me?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Let's just talk about the process, which I think we can all agree on. The process is kind of twofold, has to happen. It needs to be, we are agreeing that there needs to be an assessment of what our infrastructure is, what those needs are. We kind of know that, but we're now talking about that in a, in a comprehensive way, right? Then the second thing, then, there has to be a plan that says, here are the infrastructure needs, here are our, here are, here's the infrastructure needs, right? And here's the, the thing to fix them. And it'll be, let's say, 22 bridges, and there'll be a, a plan to fix them. I think the third thing that has to happen is then, those projects have to, they got to be prioritized into a list of what happens first, what happens second, what happens third. And at the same point, how do we create the resources, where those resources come from? The, the city itself's not going to fix the infrastructure by itself, there's a, the bill is the American jobs, American, what is it, American infrastructure and jobs, that's going to eventually come through the state to us. There'll be other, maybe the Build Back America Plan, there'll be these, these federal resources, maybe new state resources. They're also going to need matching money from the city, we know that too, it's going to, so we're going to have to also then take and figure out how to get matching money from the city, we have, we have, I didn't want to get into this lift now, but there's really, at the end of the day, only two things we can do. And that's either we're going to somehow raise property taxes, or we're going to find new funding streams to augment the existing tax structure we have. Those are the two buckets of choices that we have, there's no third bucket that I know of, and I keep looking at Councilwoman Gross, because I think she thinks about this as much, as much as I do. But I think that's the only two places either, and I think we need to figure, I am looking at, I don't want to raise property taxes. That's not my interest. So I'm saying, okay, let's figure out, is there other places where we can get increased revenue to put toward infrastructure that's not property taxes? And we need a place to start looking at that, I think, immediately, how we can, similar to what we did with the transfer of realty tax. We found a new funding, and we, we took a, a funding stream that was increasing, and we diverted it. I think we need to do the same thing with infrastructure, we have to find a particular funding stream. I'd like to find a new funding stream personally, that's my interest, that's what I'm looking at. Is there a new way to get a new funding stream to put into this infrastructure that doesn't raise taxes and doesn't tax our current annual budget? And I think that's the, that's part of this group's responsibility with the mayor, is to look at these various new funding streams that hopefully are not property taxes.
So.
That's later, but that's, that's it.
I would make the argument, Rev, that those funding streams that you're looking for, you need that evaluation. I would make the argument that the commission you're hesitant to support will direct you in that funding. Not us personally, but whether the engineers say, somebody else needs to look at this bridge because we feel it's in serious condition of failing. So without the direction as to where to go, I would say we can work in conjunction.
I agree with that, I'm not.
And, and if you're going to go out there and shake some money trees and get the available funds to start with our worst bridges, I would say, you know, then I'm all for it. But I think they have to work together, and.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I will vote for the, if, I'm going to vote, as I did before, I'm not against the commission at all. I think it, it would do what it does, and it will be, it may or may not be helpful, I'm not against it.
You know, it'll be helpful for peace of mind, if at all least, I could.
Not against, so, looking investigations, I didn't, I'm not against that. I'm simply saying, a bridge fell down a few weeks ago. We know that our, we kind of need the, but we can't wait. I guess that's what I'm saying, since you were ahead of the interrogative, we cannot wait for their report. We have to now start getting the money to fix those bridges.
You know, I agree, absolutely, you go, you go get the money, you just go get the money. That works for me, because we will probably come back with a long laundry list of money needed, so. So I look forward to, you know, serving on the commission, I hope, and, you know, actually learning as to, you know, a lot more about bridges and what's safe and what dictates it's not, so, okay, that's all, thanks.
Need further discussion? If none, I'll simply, to Reverend Burgess's comments about, is there a third bucket, there sort of is. One, you could borrow, which I personally wouldn't be supportive of this process. The other way to do it, and I'm assuming this is what you mean, is that we got to introduce a new tax that would exist for our city. The other potential revenue stream that we currently don't go after are chronically under assessed properties. We currently, as a city, and the school board would also probably want to participate with us in this, is going after chronically under assessed properties. That could be new revenue that we currently don't see, those are other ways to do it. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill is recommended.
Stay.
One abstention, affirmative recommendation. Bill 78.
Bill 78, ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article IX. Boards, commissions, and authorities by adding Chapter 179 H, Commission on Infrastructure Asset Reporting and Investment.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Second, discussion.
Question, Councilman O'Connor?
Uh, yes, there's amendments on the table, so I want to thank council members, Coghill, Burgess, and Strasburgers offices for working over, I guess, the weekend, as well as Councilman LaVell for giving an amendment as well. So I'd just like to make a motion to amend.
I can. Any discussion on the amendment?
I just, I just want to thank, thank you, I just want to thank members again for working through this, I know that it seemed contentious, but when we sit down together, we all come together and come up with, with the best interest of the city of Pittsburgh. So I want to thank Councilman O'Connor for his leadership, and I want to thank Councilman Burgess and the other members for all working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman LaVell?
Appreciate it. I just wanted to also say thank you to all the people who put in the work, because it still reflects my concern from last week that the commission have a constrained targeted goal, that it report back to council on a timely basis. And that we have really focused and prioritized a commission that will focus on bridges, roads, and landslides, right? So our most vulnerable assets, and that they will be reporting back to council. And that we've also added in the membership, so thank you to everyone, people who are subject matter experts, there are now engineers that will be on the commission. So these are all, these are all really tremendous improvements, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the bill is now amended, any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill is recommended, that takes us to Bill 121.
Bill 121, resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to establish a joint Pittsburgh Infrastructure Task Force to oversee the equitable distribution of infrastructure funds.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Motion to amend.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill is now amended, any discussion on the bill as amended? Council President?
I just want to, again, thank Reverend Burgess for working through this, I think this made it a little bit easier for me to feel more comfortable with voting for the other bills. To know that council will have some say, to make sure the council will have some say coming back. Thank you.
You, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill is recommended, that takes us to our new papers, Bill 104.
Bill 104, resolution authorizing the mayor and director or acting director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city and through the city's Department of Law to adopt certain settlement terms and enter into a settlement agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway, Manchester Citizens Corporation, Northside Leadership Conference, and Rail Pollution Protection Pittsburgh in order to resolve claims arising from the application of the Norfolk Southern Railway Company for approval to reconstruct the crossing of the North Avenue-Brighton Road Bridge docketed at the Public Utility Commission and from Northside Leadership Conference at all versus Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission Appeal docketed at number 611 CD 2019 in the Commonwealth Court.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held for executive session. That takes us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, first new paper is Bill 133.
Bill 133, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Goodwill of Southwestern PA for administrative services related to the 2022 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a cost not to exceed $200,000.
Mr. Chair, could you read 134 as well, too?
Yes.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Bill 134, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental corporation agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny and partner for work for the shared operation and administration of the 2022 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000.
A motion to approve both bills. Second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, both bills are recommended, Bill 108.
Bill 108, resolution providing for an agreement with the Fair Housing Partnership to provide fair housing, testing, outreach, and policy corpor- collaboration intended to assist government agencies and housing providers with their duties to affirmatively further fair housing and understand general fair housing laws. This legislation authorized the encumbrance for three years, one year with the option to renew for two additional years in an amount not to exceed $94,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill is recommended, that takes us to Land Use Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our one deferred paper is Bill 65.
Bill 65, resolution amending Resolution Number 863 entitled, adopting and approving the 2019 CDBG program by transferring remaining funds from the James Street Step Reconstruction Project to the Northside Christian Health Center, $76,000, and traffic calming, $14,220.54.
No, one week. Second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held one week, Bill 113.
Bill 113, resolution further amending Resolution Number 772 entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2017 capital budget and the 2017 CDBG program, approving the 2017 through 2022 capital improvement program by reducing Washington Heights a communal food bank by $5,000, increasing Southside Slope's Neighborhood Association by $5,000, and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommend, one, are all these bills together, Councilman?
Yeah, down to, down to 117, they're all CDBG for different districts, yeah.
So 114 through 117.
Okay. Okay. Bill 114, resolution further amending Resolution Number 797 entitled, adopting and approving the 2018 capital budget, the 2018 CDBG program, and the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement program by reducing Al Institute by $3,000, reducing Washington Heights a communal food bank by $2,500, increasing the 31st Ward Community Action Group by $3,000, increasing EMUS Community of Pittsburgh by $2,500, and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements. Bill Number 115, resolution. Bill number one fifteen resolution further amending resolution eight sixty-three entitled resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and nineteen capital budget and the two thousand and nineteen C D B G program, the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-four capital improvement program by amending various public service grant line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement. Bill number one sixteen resolution further amending resolution number eight forty entitled resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and twenty capital budget and the two thousand and twenty C D B G program and the two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-five capital improvement program so as to identify specific projects in council district three and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements. Bill number one seventeen resolution further amending resolution six forty-seven entitled resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget and the two thousand and twenty-one C D B G program and the two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-six capital improvement program so as to identify specific projects in council district three and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All bills for approval. That takes us to Urban Rec- Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, one new paper, Bill one oh three.
Bill one oh three resolution authorizing the director and of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the city into agreements with individual amounts of ten thousand dollars or less with various regional youth sport organizations for a total amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion.
Question, Councilwoman?
Thank you. I just, um, I just, I know a lot of people wonder about what this funding is. And I think Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle will remember that when we had our meetings for the art funding, it was one of the things I was begging the administration to do was to give some funding to our athletic associations and to our community groups that have done so much to help us get through the pandemic. And the program was overseen by Lindsay Powell and Hirsch. Um, so they, it took a longer, long, a lot longer than I had anticipated it to take. And it's a lot less than it should be, to be honest with you. So I would love to see us increase this funding um, down the road if we can talk about how we can better serve our athletic associations. Because these are the people that kept our kids busy when schools were closed, when recreation centers were not open, they were on the fields with those kids finding things to do. Um, finding ways to raise money because they couldn't do fundraisers. And so I really felt like they struggled so much to help our kids. And we should in turn now help them because they did, they did a great job and a great service to the city of Pittsburgh, keeping our youth off the streets and busy and in productive, um, positive, um, activities. So I still think that we should do something, but I do know that there's been some concern about the process and how people applied for this. And I think part of it was, um, some people were unaware of it or some people didn't know about it in ti- in time to apply. So I'd really like to look at this, um, this whole process. But I do want to thank, um, Reverend Daniel for standing with me to make sure, and the previous administration, uh, to make sure that we got this in place. But I also want to thank the current administration for, because they'll be the ones that will implement it and make sure that it's, it's done fairly. So, um, with that said, I'm, I'm thankful for some of my organizations that got the funding, but there are some that could still use it. There's some, we should put some additional money in. And honestly, I almost felt like it should have been a process where people didn't have to apply. But we know the associations, we know who's doing work in our communities and in our city. Um, we should have approached them and made sure that they were, they were either applying or that we just said, hey, you have this grant available. All you have to say is you want some, some other process. Um, so it wasn't so difficult because this is not what they do. They don't fill out paperwork. They don't do permits. They, I mean, they do permits. And even that's getting some, you know, cumbersome for them at times. So I think that, that they're not the ones that are raising money. Their way, idea of raising money is concession stands, selling tickets, things like that. They don't, this is not their thing. So I think we should make it a little bit easier, uh, of a process for them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Uh, yes, I just want to, um, talk about this, uh, this legislation. So, yeah, it certainly needed and, and, um, looking forward to working on this and seeing how we can, uh, make adjustments in the future. One, one thought that I have is to keep a registry of all the organizations that, um, you know, similar to how we have R C O, but should be much more, you know, expanded than R C O. So for instance, we could do, um, we could keep a registry of all the different leagues and nonprofits and organizations that do use sports. Um, and, you know, you know, check the permits that are, that are taken out. We have that?
We have that through, um, City Sports. It used to be big league and now it's called, I think, City Sports or something. But we have that where we know who our athletic associations are. And I mean, because when they want field permits, we know who they are. When they want something done in the community, we know who they are.
So then was that used? So the point I was going to get to is.
I love that idea though, to do the same kind.
Yeah, was that email on file for the permit holder? Was that used to send? To, I know we had. Yeah, so I'm just saying that if we set up a process, you know, so that no one's left out, they, no one can walk away and say, well, I wasn't, you know, contact, just like how an R C O would be contacted about a zoning approval. You know, something happened in their district like that, that we would also contact, maybe an automatic contact of anyone that is permitting, uh, a field. I know we have Director Vargas on.
Yeah, hi, uh, hi, thank you, Councilman. Um, and, uh, thank you, uh, Council President, um, for your remarks about this important funding. Um, I definitely agree. I've had the great opportunity of speaking, um, individually with each of these groups, um, that have received funding and those who did not as well. Um, so first to address the question about, um, if folks were notified. Unfortunately, um, I was, um, I've become more part of the process, um, in December. I know that the announcement about the opportunity went out, um, around September, I believe it was announced. And there was a couple of months, um, where, uh, you know, I know the mayor's office did, um, a couple of different things to communicate with, with groups. And we also shared it, um, with our networks as well. What I will say about if there's like a, a registry, it's not as formal as that. So I really like that concept and I think we could definitely get in a place where through this year, we can, um, we could put something like that together. Um, and the only thing I'll mention just by way of, um, um, Council President's comments is just that to acknowledge that we had about close to forty organizations that were seeking funding through this process. And we only had enough money to support, um, twenty-two organizations. Um, so it just kind of speaks to the need that's out there for this kind of support. Um, and just that, you know, we have to think about what that could look like from a budget standpoint if we were able to, um, provide it to anyone that, um, was interested in this kind of funding, whether it's looking at the amounts so that more groups can, um, benefit or looking at the total amount that we have for this funding.
Thank you. Yeah, it'd be great to create some sort of registry because it's more than permits. Um, where we can find information. I have a boxing organization that uh, uses a building that the city isn't involved with permitting. Um, but it is a city building. It's an old firehouse. So, uh, there wouldn't be a permanent file for them. And then also like, you know, the H A C P use their property. They have a different. Um, I'm not sure what their permitting process is. So if we can work on that, I think that'd be good. That way it's just one, you know, continual blast of emails that are, you know, contacts that go, uh, that go out to, um, you know, just to improve it for, for future grants. And then is this grant just going to work similar to C D, C D B G funds? Or is this, is this just an automatic?
Or not.
As far as so, or is this a reimbursement?
Um, so right now, um, part of my connecting with each organization has been getting from them. Some groups are so small that a reimbursement doesn't work. So we're working on a scenario where perhaps the city would do the, um, you know, we, we would work out how we can support them, um, by either, um, helping with that particular purchase, um, but the vast majority are reimbursement. So there was just like a handful of groups. And also to your point about the types of sports. Um, one thing that was really interesting, and I think you'll see, um, in the documents that I, um, sent forward with this, uh, the different kinds of sports that were part of this. And it was, um, pretty, um, pretty diverse in terms of what we consider youth sport, which I think is really interesting. And again, gets to the point that it's more than those that might be using our permits. But there's a lot of other, other groups out there doing, um, this important work with kids.
Okay, so it doesn't have to go through the same C D B G process that's.
No.
ARPA funds, correct?
Um, right now, um, it's in our general fund budget for, um, so it was added into the parks, um, general fund. So we're working with the solicitor, um, on, um, putting together a new kind of, of agreement for this particular, um, opportunity.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Um, first of all, um, thank you, uh, Director Fargus for your work. Um, for those of us who have worked with you, you're a joy to work with and is absolutely brilliant. And I believe one of the, um, the highest quality directors in our city. Um, just a brilliant young woman. Um, I, I have a question for you then, and then I'll make a statement though, I'll, I'm certainly supportive. How many, how many individual athletic associations approximately are there in the city?
Um, so if you, if you're talking about specifically athletic associations, um, uh, and not just at all the different groups that might be working with, uh, with young people, with, in sports in general. Um, the ones that I have, I'm just looking at this list now, it's somewhere between twenty-five and thirty, I would say, but I'd have to take a longer look, look at the list that consider themselves associations versus, um, there are a lot of groups that are also working with young people in sport. Um, yeah.
And how mu- how many of those thirty are primarily African American? Like, you know, the football teams, about how many of them are primarily African American, which you're guessing?
I would say, I would say probably like two thirds, half to two thirds. A high percentage.
Okay, so maybe twenty of the thirty are African American, right? Guessing, we're just guessing. I'm, I'm going to, Duane Ashley was great public servant of this city. Um, and my friend. Um, I've talked to him about this for the, my entire length of council. And I've talked to Councilman Lavelle and I've talked about this. And so I'm going to maybe perhaps talk about this starting now publicly. I have, I have hesitated to talk about it for a variety of reasons. Um, one of which because as everyone knows, um, I believe that tackle football should not be played for kids under fourteen. I do not believe personally that tackle football is a good use of their energies up until they're fourteen years of age. Um, it creates concussions and other injuries that can be lifelong. Um, I prefer them to play basketball and track and baseball, flag football and other things. Um, um, that's just my own personal opinion, but I support the athletic teams, even though I personally did not let my sons play under fourteen for those reasons. I believe significantly and, um, Director Ashley agreed with me on this. Our sports teams, especially in the African American community, are vital to the development of these young people. But they are so different in terms of their funding, their structure that it is almost unfair. There are certain programs, like in my community, if you go to look at the sports team in, in, um, the Gators, right? Um, they have state of the art coaching. They have an after school program. They have a facility. They have just, uh, you know, almost in terms of African American sports teams, they are the, they are the gold standard, right? And I won't mention other, 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 other teams, but there are other teams in my district that don't have all those things and whose funding is only a fraction. We really need to figure out a way and, and Councilman Lavelle and I talked about the, the Philadelphia Police Athletic League as an example. We need to find a way to, to narrow the advantages so that every team has some baseline of resources. Um, some baseline, I believe of after school programming, because I think it goes hand in hand. These young people, they don't just need athletics, they need academics. Um, and counseling, especially in black communities, many, many of them are in trauma. They're living trauma induced lives. And so, um, I am, I have always been in favor. And I will try to now work toward that in my remaining time as on this body. There needs to be some overarching structure because they use our fields mostly. Um, they. Huh? But we need, we need to, we need to, we need to figure out a way.
We are.
We need to figure out a way, I think, to, to sort of help them become, um, standard across many issues, whether it's finances, whether it's, whether it's counseling, whether it's after school programming, all of it will take resources, right? And I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, and also while I'm, while I'm talking about this, I usually don't talk about things unless I can kind of fix it. I also going to suggest strongly that the money that we're now going to start splitting into violence reduction, when we do prevention programs, that some of that money should be spent, especially in African American communities, in those sports teams. Because those sports teams are affiliated with some of the high risk people. They're may not be on the team, but they certainly come to the games and they're, they're in, they're in that world. And so I'm going to suggest that per, that perhaps, um, the new money that we're going to invest in community based organizations that we had to seriously think, and I want to thank Director Fargus for thinking about this too. I think we should seriously think about a process to start investing in these youth sports teams to combine athletic performance with the other. I think there's, I think there's three stools, at least in my mind. There's athletic, um, performance. There is, it's for, for, for African American kids in African American communities. There's academic, there's athletic performance, there's academic achievement, there is counseling um, and, and, and soft skills that teach them how to act appropriately in conflict resolution and, and workforce communication, all those sort of soft skills. In my mind, all three of those things have to be balanced. The kids need to be healthy academically, healthy physically, and sports does that. They need to be healthy intellectually and they need to know Shakespeare and, and, and Black, we're in Black History Month, right? So they need to know Black history and, and, you know, um, they also need to know how to interact in the world as a citizen and how to interact in social settings and not resort to violence and aggression to settle disputes. And, and to also deal with past trauma and the trauma of their families, they need counseling. So I, I'm hoping that we may be able to think about the sports teams as a vehicle to balance those three, to, to have an intersection where we're supporting academic achievement, we're supporting athletic accomplishments and we're providing counseling and soft skill, um, um, citizen stuff to these kids. And so that's sort of my thinking. I hope to, to, to be mu- much more active in that thinking over the next few months. But for the first time, I want to at least lay that on the table as to a goal that I think we can work toward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman.
I think, yeah, you know what? I thought Councilwoman Gross was before me. I did see your hand up before me. So I, I, no, you're.
I thought, that's fine. I saw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, so I, I concur and I, I just want to add some historical context, right? You all have been on council long before me and so you saw these cutbacks, right? But we, I observed it as a citizen. There was a time when the city did support our athletic league. We did support recreation. We had recreation centers. We had programming. When I knock on the doors of my district, uh, my constituents tell me stories about how they basically lived their lives at the recreation centers and it saved their lives. The count, there were counselors at the recreation centers. There were other kids at the recreation centers. There were activities, hand crafts, whatever it was, tutoring, after school learning. And in Act forty-seven, while we were suffering near bankruptcy, we had to close and cancel and fire all of that staffing, right? Close those centers, move that funding, delete those funding lines, fire those city employees. Um, and so it's time to add that back. We've seen the harm that it caused our families, our neighborhoods by us not doing this support work, right? This is what investing in communities looks like. And that we have, I think the councilman might have been referring to the Stop the Violence Fund, right? That we have voted as a council under his leadership to divert from the general fund into a pot that will invest and strengthen communities. That is the rightful place to do it. And so I'm, I'm supportive of this concept and, and look forward to exploring it. I will also say for the record that when I saw the list of these leagues, I immediately called Madam President and I said, how did this list get generated? I have objections to this list. I don't see the application process. I don't know how these decisions were made. And she promised to help make this, expand the list and expand the amount of dollars. I appreciate that, Madam President, because I do think that there are leagues out there, teams out there that are doing excellent work and serving hundreds of kids that are not on this list that seems to have been generated by the last administration. So I look forward to working with everybody to expand support for the athletic leagues and for basically supporting our kids.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly support everything you're all saying, I got to tell you. As, as somebody who grew up in Pittsburgh Athletic Associations, that was, Councilwoman Gross, you say about, you know, you spend all day there, we literally spent all day at the ball field. That was our life, everything focused around baseball and, you know, the sports and it really, you know, for some. I would tell you, me personally, I feel sports are a metaphor for life, they really are. I currently serve as the Beachy Athletic Association President. The kids aren't there like when I was, I was a kid. I don't know if they're just inside playing on the computers or, or what, what the story is why they're not coming out. But Ms. Vargas, I would like to see, first of all, as far as funding goes, when you're talking about taking from Stop the Violence Fund, no better way to spend money towards violence in sports organizations, I will tell you. Ms. Vargas, as far as the, you know, for me, as the president of Athletic Association, I'm trying to get it back on its feet. I really would love to see funds put toward recruiting, meaning marketing for kids. Let them know, hey, tryouts, you know, just to make sure they have that interest. I feel like a big disconnect for me is I don't feel like the kids know they can even be part of an athletic association at this point. So I'm really looking to kickstart that in a way of some funding towards promoting it. And, you know, I, I even go as far as paying coaches, you know? It's the hardest thing is to find coaches, a parent usually of a child who's playing ninety-nine percent of the time. And, you know, everybody has busy lives these days, a lot going on in the world. It's hard to find somebody who dedicate that type of time into teaching kids, so.
It's because our police and firefighters used to live in the city and do it.
Yeah, right, right, so.
It's true.
So, so I, I ended up becoming the, the president of Beach Athletic Association because our kids were moving on into high school and they no longer had the desire to coach. So we kind of lost all of our coaches and I don't feel like it's being replenished for me. And there's a lot of things I'm doing, reaching out, reaching out to the Latino community in my district, which I feel like just need to be playing sports for the kids, at least, and the adults for that matter. So, so, you know, when we talk about finding money to support our sporting facilities, whether it's the teams, whether it's the equipment, whether it's tournaments that they're playing in, you know, I'm in complete agreement, I feel it's a necessity. I feel like it's the best way to fight crime, honestly, is to get these kids involved in, in sports at a young age. And, you know, to this day, my best friends are from people I've played, played Little League baseball with, so. So that's, that's it for me. Thanks, I'm in support, of course.
Thank you, second round.
I also ran an athletic association, as you know, for probably about twenty years or so. But what I did, Rev, and I think I would love to see us do this, is I tied in, if you wanted to coach, you had to go through a training. We did the psychology of the game, we had a psychologist talk about how you should talk to kids and inspire them and not, you know, berate them or belittle them. We had, our own medics did how to handle a sports emergency. And we had, everyone had to have their clearances and we helped them through that process. But when I got here, one of the things we did was we changed the permits that they had to have, their clearances or whatever to do the, to get the permits. But that's even a challenge now because there's so many people that want to coach and want to be with their kids that do have some history. And you want to make sure that you're building those relationships with their kids. So I think having those, having some kind of process in place and tied into this money would be amazing. That we add additional funds, we, we know the groups that we have that are doing things in the community. And sometimes even football programs like in our district spin off, it may start as football, but it will end up being different things. And that's what's happening now with our, one of our groups. And so they're getting involved in other things. So I would love to see us tie this money into some of those things that we want to do that's going to make things great for kids. But Director Vargas and I used to work for an organization together years ago when I worked across the city. And I don't know if you remember this, but one of the things that we did with one, with that organization is we got computers into an athletic association and the kids had to do their homework and stuff before they got to the field and things that, there was two, things like that, that we worked with the schools and there was all different things. So I'd love to see us work together to do some of those things. So that we're not just putting kids on the field, we're in, in building their skills and, and, you know, in terms of athletics, but we're building the, the whole, the whole child and the whole, and helping the whole family. So I'm, I'm, but I'd love to see it tied into this money, so let's add some additional money and come up with some, a process that's, that's beneficial. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Only thing I'll add is that this is also a conversation we should probably have.
Can I, can I just add real quickly? The mayor's office also is agreeable to work with us on this and Councilwoman Gross, I wanted to add that, I apologize, sorry.
Of what, for a number of these organizations, the ten thousand dollars that they're going to get, they're going to go directly to the school district to cover the. Also supplementing what some of the schools are not providing in terms of athletic. But that's also a conversation we should probably have. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to mention, you know, I'm happy that we're talking about the Stop the Violence Fund that we've previously discussed, probably away from this table, I think. But I just want to, I don't, I don't want to lose sight on the expanding, you know, if we go forward that we're looking more at the, the whole picture of like after school programming, so like more than sports, arts and, 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 you know, also there's, you know, great programs out there for electronics now. And so just, just a whole, I'm just taking my daughter, we're, we're trying to, well, just, you know, she likes sports, but, you know, she's, she's very into, into art. And so I just think it'd be great to, you know, expand to all types of different options for children.
Like our rec center should be doing twenty-four hours a day, they should be open.
Right.
Just at least one north, southwest, I'm sorry, I'm shutting up, sorry.
So I agree with you, Councilman Lovell. And I, I'll talk more about this hopefully in the next few weeks, but we need, our kids are all of our kids. And they're always all of our kids, right? My nephews, my grand nephews are, they're playing for the Gators football team now, they, and in public schools. Up until the pandemic, I used to have them a weekend, at least one weekend a month. Stepping stones there, I think they're now six, eight and ten. And so, boys, and the oldest one, I think is seventeen. But we have to coordinate and that's, we have that conversation maybe later, but, and I hope to have it later. I know the school board wants to have its accomplishments highlighted. I know that, and that's their focus. But we need to partner with the city together and figure out a joint process to engage these kids. We have to do it together. The violence in our schools are not going to be stopped by the school district by itself. Because these kids are going to leave the schools and come back to the community, right? Where the schools have, schools have them six hours a day, the community has them the rest of the eighteen hours a day, right? And so we have to come to partnerships where everything is coordinated so that the after-school programming is consistent with the schools, consistent with the, and, and naturally, my hope, and that's the other, you know, I'm, I'm going into these, I, I'm at the, you know, going toward the end of my, my career in many ways. And so I'm starting to think about what I can leave as a legacy. And I think the coordination of activities toward our kids is something, a legacy that's worth time spending in. And so I'm, I'm hopeful, hopeful that the school board is willing to partner with the city in a direct partnership, that we can come together in a direct partnership and coordinate activities between the city and the school district to best serve these kids. In particularly to increase, which is my, my laser-like focus. My real interest is to increase academic achievement, that's really what I want. I mean, I, I, all the other things, you know, I like, I like the arts, you know, I have a daughter, it's very artsy. But I'm, I really, really believe, really believe in increasing the academic achievement of the kids. They have to be able to read, write, do math and express themselves. Read, write, do math and express themselves, those fundamental skills. They have, we have to increase their competency in those fundamental skills. And so, and I don't think the school board, in fact, if the school district could do it by itself, it would have done it. Kids. Pandemic has created this crisis of educational learning in our kids. We had to take everybody, the church, the parents, the community members, council, the school district. We have to come together as one and, 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 and work together to create the resources. My kids were going to do fine. I put enough money into them, they should be okay, right? But there are other people who don't have the money. And so we had to help them with the resources because those kids are no different than my kids. Every kid deserves the same opportunity to be successful. It's our job to give it to them, that's, that's my, that's my platform, I believe that all my heart.
I just want to tell a story real quick, and I know you were talking about my brother, by the way you're talking. But you went, you went to Central, my brother was the vice principal at Central for, for decades.
And my English teacher.
Yeah, for decades. And I walked into a party one time and everybody's calling him all kinds of names. They're like, they were so angry and I went home, I was like, you're ruining my life. I was like G M Brady from the Brady Bunch. But here what it was, was he benched the entire football team from Central at a playoff game, including the seniors because they failed an English exam. And they were so livid, but I'll tell you what, now I see those people and they remember and they're successful. None of them were, the only, only one of them became a football star, nobody else did, so I'll just say that. But he also taught Danny Marina, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, that takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. First new papers, Bill one oh five.
Bill one oh five, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for Garfield Highland fifty-three seventy-five through fifty-three seventy-seven Rosetta Street, fifty-three sixty-eight through fifty-three seventy Rosetta Street, two thirteen to two fifteen North Aiken Avenue and four oh five to four thirty-one North Aiken Avenue in the tenth ward.
Question to approve?
Thank you. Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill one oh six.
Bill one oh six, resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Majin Building Loft Project, which will involve the renovation of an eight-story retail and warehouse manufacturing building into a residential condominium complex with eleven units and retail space on the ground floor. The site address is nine fifteen Liberty Avenue in the second ward.
Question to approve?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill one oh seven.
Bill one oh seven, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the U R A and New Granada Development LLC or a related entity for the seller block ten N lots two fifty-five, two fifty-seven, two fifty-eight and two fifty-eight A in the fifth ward, council district number six.
Question to approve?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, that exhausts our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements this afternoon at one thirty P M. Council will hold an executive session on Bill one oh nine as relates to an issue of a warrant. Also this afternoon at two thirty, council will hold interviews for the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance, director of city planning and members of the Urban Rebuilding Authority. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, March first and Wednesday, March second, respectively. Both meetings will be held at ten A M. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by nine A M. The morning of said meeting. We also call the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Is there anything for members? Seeing none, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn meeting.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.